Good evening again. Today is Tuesday, April 11, 2023. This is a special meeting and workshop with the Board of Education. We actually already opened the meeting at 7:00 and went into executive session. We're back from executive session, so no need to reopen the meeting. We'll just move on to our next item, which is Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we're going to start off with our workshop presentation on the budget 2020-24. I guess I got out of the way because I'm blocking the screen.
Do you guys want to change your seats?
I'll just pull it up.
Why not you guys stand up?
Everybody ready? Good evening, Board President Peter Cassin, Vice President Laura Banky, and trustees and our school community. Tonight, we continue our conversation around the 2023-2024 proposed budget. I am joined this evening by Dr. Christopher Keough, Dr. Kate Sweeney, Mr. John Marash, Mr. Peter Kilgallen, and Ms. Faith Sparks. This presentation shines a light on the budget items related to the William E. Cottle Elementary School. We will look at the progress of our elementary school, what they've made so far, all this progress towards our strategic plan, and the way the current proposed budget helps to advance and accelerate those efforts. We are proud of everything that the Cottle School has accomplished over the past year and look forward to building on that success in our next budget year. I will quickly review the budget process. Our work is driven, as you know, by a very specific mission: to prepare every student for excellence. It is not enough to simply provide an education. The education must be of the highest quality. The school board sets a high bar for itself, as well as for the administration, teachers, and staff. Our work advances the board goals that you see listed here, encouraging a culture of continuous improvement. At our last budget presentation, you saw how these goals spurred the work at our middle and high schools. Tonight, we will shine a similar spotlight on the William E. Cottle Elementary School. Our efforts build on our strategic plan, a roadmap for achieving the district's goals and objectives. This helps us budget our resources and efforts on the most critical areas, ensuring alignment and consistency with the district's overall vision and mission. Our proposed budget is based on these four pillars: diverse needs of learners, social emotional learning, professional learning, and contemporary teaching and learning. At every budget presentation, I read these out. You know that we're a small district and we have a lot to celebrate. Included among these are our many points of pride, and there are many of them. This is just a sample of the budget-supported initiatives that are worthy of celebration. Our students achieve at high levels in many arenas. We are Tuckahoe proud. These achievements drive our thinking about strategic planning and budgeting. In academics, our students celebrated acceptances to top colleges. And I had to put more in because we've gotten some more great, incredible acceptances: colleges like Princeton, John Hopkins, Washington University in St. Louis, Villanova, USC, NYU, RIT, RPI, and other top, high-ranking Sunnies, and many other colleges. They would come off the charts, but this class has done wonderfully well. In athletics, our students receive all-league, all-conference, and all-section honorifics. And in extracurriculars, students achieve at high levels, winning awards in clubs and teams like Science Olympiad and the Debate Team, and clubs that contribute to the community like Habitat for Humanity, and the music and art clubs where students express themselves and hone in on their skills. Tonight, we'll share that much of this achievement is due to the strong foundation being built in our elementary school, where we have been on the cutting edge of the science of reading for the last few years. While evidence-based literacy approaches that lean on foundational decoding skills gain traction in other school districts, and if you watch other budgets, they are leaning towards what we have already been doing. We have been using these strategies again for the last few years. We have been using data to drive instruction. Tonight, you will see how this all comes together to promote student achievement. We need to continue to build in our budget the time and resources to ensure educators have the tools and foundations in these approaches to best support our students' success pre-K, 12, and beyond. With a sense of our priorities and driving goals, we turn to analysis of our enrollment and our sections. As you can see, the Cottle enrollment remains consistent. Although we are increasing a kindergarten section, we are decreasing a second-grade section. This has no budget implications and keeps class size small. In middle school, our population also remains steady and in line with board priorities. Our average class size remains low. Lastly, we see some growth in our projected general education enrollment for our high school, but it's still pretty similar. We now move to budget additions and reductions. With our enrollment stable and our strategic plan in full swing, we are looking to build on the positive. Proposed changes in curriculum and materials at the William E. Cottle Elementary School includes resources that help to further align our early literacy program with scientific findings regarding reading instruction, as you will hear tonight. Meanwhile, for our older elementary students, we are looking at our novel studies and taking the opportunity to introduce some new texts that align with more rigorous standards and diverse student experiences. Additionally, to increase rigor in our science instruction, we will invest in updated lab equipment for next year's science investigations. In total, changes to Cottle curriculum totaled $19,300. Some of these purchases, such as the decodable texts, as I said last week, will also receive state aid. More information about this year's progress and next year's proposals will be provided in the next section of our presentation. Meanwhile, at the middle school, high school, we will also invest in materials for rigorous science instruction while procuring new materials for our growing engineering and STEM programs. As discussed at our last board workshop, we will also purchase subscriptions for writing support software, No Red Ink, and vocabulary instruction, vocabulary.com. We will set aside money for new novels in the middle school that, similar to the elementary school, will align with more rigorous standards. Lastly, members of our science program will be piloting standard-based grading. The total cost of the proposed curriculum changes is $12,600 for the middle school, high school. Now, in professional development, our largest initiative in the middle school, high schools are partnership with innovative designs for education. As discussed at the last board presentation, the 23-24 budget supports the training to continue to support our previous cohort of teachers while introducing the new principles of the learner-active, technology-infused classrooms to a new cohort of middle school and high school teachers. Additionally, we are setting money aside for teachers to work on developing curriculum over the summer for our new elective courses. Total budgeted for this professional development is $23,050. In reviewing the changes in staffing, it is important to look at these changes as an entire district. So let's begin with the elementary school. Following the advancement of student sections, there will be a reduction of a section in grade two and an addition of a section in grade K to accommodate smaller class size in the younger grades. Meanwhile, following a cohort of specialized students in grade five, there will be a reduction of a 1.0 FTE, full-time teacher, in special education in the elementary school, and this teacher will be added to the middle school to follow that cohort up. This year, we had two teachers, two special education teachers on the fifth-grade level, and one of them will be moving up. Now, let's move down to additions in the middle school, high school. In addition to the 1.0 full-time teacher in special education at the middle school, taken from the reduction at the elementary school, we are also adding an additional 1.0 teacher for needs for students in the middle school and high school. We are also increasing an additional .033 full-time equivalent to allow for a special education earth science lab. This will only meet once a cycle. We are adding electives in the high school. After reviewing our survey for families, we wanted to see why families left the middle school and went to private school. We heard from a lot of the families that they thought that we didn't have enough electives. Additionally, I met with a group of representative students from all different classes in the high school, in different backgrounds, and they said the same thing. They said that they would like to see more interesting, rigorous types of electives. So this year, added to our recently added electives like statistics and math or science elective-like forensics, we will offer high-quality, engaging electives in ELA, social studies, and math. Ultimately, this calls for a .4 FTE increase in ELA, a .2 FTE increase in math, and a .2 FTE increase in social studies. We are also adding a .1 FTE in ELA with a focus on writing. In terms of reductions in the middle school, high school, there will be a reduction of a .3 FTE due to restructuring our math symposium to target students interested in math acceleration and provide them with necessary skills for success in algebra. So we're going to switch it to that. A 1.0 reduction in the TIGR program as we have other supports in place for tutoring. Now turning to the district-wide impact of all of this. Overall, we are proposing a modest .433 increase in staffing district-wide. This represents an increase of 3.933 teachers and a decrease of 3.5. So we're really only asking for a .433, which is less than a half-time employee. Meanwhile, in terms of extracurriculars, we are looking to expand our WEC art club, as this was an extremely popular club, as Mr. Marash or Mr. Kilgallen can let anybody know that some kids did not get into it this year, and we have a waiting list, so we are adding that for next year. Additionally, our STEM extracurriculars, such as Science Olympiad, has been so successful turning curious students into innovative thinkers, we want to put aside money for that program. Additionally, the middle school debate team, which has taken off with leaps and bounds, is so liked by our middle school students that we would like to take their motivation and continue their journey with debate into high school. The total budgeted change for extracurriculars is $4,739. In planning for changes in technology, we are entering a new installment purchase agreement with our local BOCs to fund the replacement of Chromebooks in grades three, six, and nine. We are also replacing aging smartboards with new interactive flat panels. At the conclusion of this year, we will have funded the replacement of all ARM-based projectors, saving us money on replacement bulbs. The total budgeted change for technology is $27,000. But we also have a reduction in one-time expenses. And I remember the board asking about this, like, are you going to be using this money every year? And we said we weren't, and we're not, and we're not putting it anywhere else. So the 22-23 budget included amounts for one-time, non-occurring expenses. These are not included, again, in the 23-24 budget. These included in 22-23, we purchased furniture for the Cottle library, the middle school, art room, and materials and resources for our learner-active, technology-infused classrooms. The 2022-23 budget also included funding for wireless upgrade project. Our wireless access points are at the end of their life and are no longer supported. We purchased new ones, and they will be installed over the summer. The 22-23 budget also included funding for a one-time purchase of curriculum materials that included multi-year subscriptions. Again, these were one-time costs that will be revisited at the end of their respective contracts. None of these are included in this budget. Total reduction of one-time expenses, $296,000. In total, with the changes to support advancement of our strategic plan, we are showing a reduction of $152,391 to these areas that were discussed in the previous slides. We now turn the spotlight to the incredible work happening at Cottle Elementary. I invite Principal John Marash to get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman, and BOE representatives for allowing us to shine a spotlight on the great work happening at Cottle School. As Dr. Goodman mentioned, I am joined by my colleagues who will be walking us through the topics you see here with links to the budget proposal and opportunities to celebrate the success of our staff and Cottle Cubs. This past year, we have focused on advancing the strategic plan. I'll begin by sharing how when you walk the halls of Cottle, you will see our focus on social emotional learning. Dr. Keough and Mr. Kilgallen will then share our efforts to advance contemporary teaching and learning through a culture of data and promoting the science of reading. Dr. Sweeney will then cover our diverse needs of learners and the innovative ways we are supporting our Cottle Cubs. We will also take a moment to celebrate the Cottle community and the great things happening, while Dr. Sweeney and Dr. Keough will take a second to shine a light on the exciting work happening in our UPK program. The strategic plan sees social emotional learning, or SEL, as a key driver in our students' optimal mental, social, and emotional well-being. When you walk the halls of Cottle, you see the ways in which our teams' investment in a positive SEL environment pays off. Our hallways are decorated with positive affirmations inspiring our students to do their very best. We have school-wide initiatives that our students track, linking their positive contributions to their community with positive incentives. A quality learning environment in the elementary school is one in which our students feel safe, engaged, and where they ultimately have fun. You can always measure this by the number of students smiling in the hallways, which, might I add, is off the charts. We review data from our school climate survey, and this year's pre- and post-data will help us to track the success of some of our newer initiatives. At our parent-teacher conferences, I spoke with many families who shared their students are loving their time as Cottle Cubs, and this is very rewarding. These snapshots, however, are the result of a systematic focus and clear curriculum. We all need to be speaking the same language, looking for the same behaviors, and cultivating a sense of community. Rethink is our SEL program that helps to align these efforts. SEL lessons are taught in all classes at all grade levels by our school counselor, Ms. Rachel Silver, and our school psychologists, Dr. Randy Newman and Ms. Sabrina Pedudo. We have seen these lessons come to life when we manage conflicts among students. When they are in our office, they are able to pull from a vocabulary of responsibility and empathy. Research shows links between SEL and academic success. For example, one study found that third graders who participated in an empathy-based intervention, like the ones we are sharing tonight, showed improvements in their reading comprehension scores. Researchers submit that this is due to a greater sensitivity to the emotions of characters and texts. Ultimately, this is why it is a key driver for our strategic plan. Promoting a safe and positive school environment also requires us to think about what we pay attention to. We do not want adults constantly saying no or admonishing behaviors that do not align with our expectations. Positive behavioral interventions and supports is an evidence-based framework. It is linked with improved behavior, enhanced academic performance, increased teacher satisfaction, and improved school climate. Part of this framework requires identifying behaviors we want students to demonstrate and acknowledge them when they meet those expectations. This is where PAWS comes in. Led by Ms. Jaclyn Valentine and Ms. Nicole Mundell and the members of the PAWS committee, the PAWS program was created to cultivate a positive and collaborative culture at Cottle. Ms. Mundell, Ms. Valentine, and the PAWS committee are continuously working with the entire Cottle staff to customize this program for our amazing Cottle Cubs. Dr. Newman, Ms. Pedudo, and Ms. Silver are helping to bridge this initiative with our social emotional learning program. Students have the opportunity to earn PAWS by demonstrating expected behaviors outlined within the program that also align with the district's strategic plan. PAWS stands for Positive Attitude, Act Responsibly, Work Towards Success, and Show Respect. The Cottle staff has collaborated to define student expectations that fall within each of these categories, specific to each grade level. When demonstrating these expected behaviors, any staff member in the building may present the class with a class PAW, which will be showcased within each classroom. Teachers collaborated to determine how many PAWS their classes need to earn before receiving a no-cost incentive, like pajama day, show-and-tell, extra recess. This decision was based on the students' needs, the dynamics of the classroom, and the students' interests. We have already observed, and we anticipate, student engagement, motivation, and morale to increase with the continued implementation of this program. You may remember that Mr. Kilgallen and I gave each of you, Board of Education members, a PAW at a previous Board of Education meeting. Well, now, during PAWS madness, your PAW means even more. PAWS madness is a K through 5 Cottle event that students learned about on March 6th. Students in all grade levels will be challenged to reach a target number of PAWS each month. If Cottle Cubs reach the monthly goal from March through June, the students will earn a massive PAWS-worthy celebration at the end of the year. Again, PAWS will be earned by having a positive attitude, acting responsibly, working towards success, and showing respect. Weekly PAWS counts will be collected and reflected on a bar graph designed on a bulletin board outside of the cafeteria so that students can see each day their progress towards their goal. A committed team of teacher leaders with varied experiences and expertise are ensuring the success of these different initiatives. Here, some of them will share their insights, and be ready, there might be some breaking news in what you're about to see.
One of my roles as the school counselor at Cottle is to provide tier-one services for all students by pushing into every K to 5 classroom once a month. To date, I've taught well over 150 social emotional guidance lessons. All of my lessons originate from themes found in the Rethink Ed program, which is based on the Five Castle competencies. I collaborated with Rethink to align those themes with the PAWS characteristics that we are promoting throughout the school. So far this year, we have learned about how to be a good friend, how to solve problems and resolve conflicts peacefully, how to show empathy and be kind, the importance of having a growth mindset, and this month, we're practicing coping skills we can use to manage stress. In April, we'll be focusing on believing in ourselves and the importance of positive self-talk. For students who need additional support, Dr. Newman, Mrs. Pedudo, and I offer tier-two services through weekly small groups. I work with kindergarten, first, and third-grade students, while Dr. Newman and Mrs. Pedudo provide tier-two support for the other grades. Currently, I'm midway through groups that focus on creating and maintaining healthy friendships and developing self-confidence and leadership skills. As needed, we also meet with students individually to do short-term, solution-focused counseling that typically lasts for six to eight sessions. This setup for the school counseling program provides me the opportunity to get to know all students at Cottle, with the end goal of contributing to the school climate by promoting a safe and nurturing environment.
PAWS is a Cottle-wide initiative aiming to improve positive behavior as well as a unified and positive school culture. The initiative highlights universal expectations and common language used across the building, which helps not only students, but also staff, to cohesively work toward the outlined targets. During grade-level assemblies, we presented the initiative to the students and actually had them come up with what they felt like aligned with each of the principles of PAWS.
It was important for us to outline specific behaviors that we wanted to see in our students so they understand what is expected of them. Students and teachers work together to develop rewards that best suit their students' interests. We are currently working on a building-wide challenge where students have to co-
Bringing to you this morning some breaking news here at Cottle School.
Our news team has been told to expect an avalanche of working towards success and a dramatic demonstration of respectful behavior among all the students from kindergarten through grade five. Over to you, Dr. Sweeney.
Today, reliable sources have predicted that March, April, May, and June at William E. Cottle will have record, record, record numbers, and it will be colossal, stupendous record-setting. Because it's time for PAWS madness!
So it is every Cottle student's job to demonstrate all of these things and earn as many PAWS as possible.
Each month, we will set a school goal of how many PAWS the entire school should earn. You could find out if Cottle students have met the goal each month by looking at the bulletin board outside of the cafeteria.
If you earn the goal amount for March, April, May, and June, there will be a spectacular, stupendous, end-of-the-year PAWS celebration. So let's earn those PAWS and make that temperature rise. Earn those PAWS!
Thank you, Ms. Mundell and Ms. Valentine, for alerting us to this breaking news. We will be keeping a close eye on this madness in the coming months.
After that lovely presentation, we will now shift to the contemporary teaching and learning pillar. We will continue our focus on cultivating data. In addition to the SEL data that Mr. Marash just mentioned, we study, we administer a number of assessments to monitor the academic progress of our students. This includes DIBELS, I Ready, and curriculum-based measures. Teachers are better able to see their students as learners because of these multiple measures. The building-wide data team seeks to pull these forms of data and gather a bird's-eye view of trends, patterns, areas of strength, and areas of focus. In the fall, we unpacked student assessment data from the state exams and the I Ready Fall Benchmark. This winter, we came together to review progress on I Ready Benchmark assessments. The building-level data team consists of one teacher representative from each grade level, special education teachers, building-level administration, and central office administration. Administrators and grade-level representatives from the building-wide data team then take the findings back to each grade level, this is the grade-level data teams, to unpack further the findings from the building-wide data team. An important part of this work is focusing on the grade-to-grade articulation, monitoring the progress and success of the different demographic groups identified by New York State, and the building-wide data team makes notes of these trends, patterns, and findings, and provides briefing reports for the teams that Dr. Keough will explain next.
So this brings us to the work of our professional learning communities. As you may know, when we say "teacher teams," we're referring to teachers on a single grade. And this year, those teachers are also united around an area of inquiry. So as a point of information, as we get into the older grades, we may have inquiry teams based around a subject area rather than the grade level because of departmentalization. For example, our math teachers in the fourth and fifth grades have been studying interventions meant to promote growth in the area of geometry. Another example might be teachers in the younger grades gathering around a shared area of inquiry, such as E&amp;L instruction. Ultimately, these inquiry teams unpack the data and develop an action plan. Teachers execute this plan, supporting one another in their teams, and then present their findings to their colleagues so that we may network our collective improvement. What worked for one team might also work for another team. We also develop a library of successful, research-driven, tier-one instructional strategies. So when we're meeting as an IST, we can say, hey, you might want to try what the first-grade team just did. It worked out really well for them. And we are also able to provide more granular information to inform the efforts of that building-wide data team that Peach has described. So that work that we're doing in these small teams also feeds back to that source. And you'll see that this work is cyclical. The line returns back to itself. As a deliberately developmental learning organization committed to continuous improvement, our successful interventions should spawn new successful interventions. And interventions that do not see the results that we wanted should be studied, valued, and modified. Working collaboratively like this allows teachers to calibrate their expectations, analyze current instructional practice, and create action plans that improve teaching and learning. Rather than just relying on outside experts or default to sending our teachers to outside trainings, which are all still very important parts of our professional learning plan, this year has become a sustainable internal structure that drives our school's continuous
Thank you, Dr. Keough. There is so much curriculum to cover. So when teachers want to implement responsive, innovative interventions, the "what I need" period, or WIN period, is an ideal structure. the WHAT-I-NEED period or WIN period is an ideal structure. WIN is a designated time where students receive targeted support or work with increased rigor. This is perfect for differentiating instruction, as students can be thoughtfully grouped, or the teacher may weave in time for one-on-one consulting or conferencing. Both remediation and enrichment are part of this period. Students who need support have time carved out where they can receive it. While students who show they are ready to move on have a window of period for enrichment and extensive activities that challenge them and help them grow academically. Over the course of the past two years, Mr. Marash, Dr. Keo, and I have provided guidance on how a WIN period can be used. This includes ways to use our data to group students based on areas of need, resources that provide challenge and enrichment, and time to collaborate with their colleagues to plan different tier-one interventions. Additionally, Dr. Keo, Mr. Marash, and I have also scheduled visits of WIN periods and provided feedback to teachers individually and collectively as we continue to build this program.
And lastly, in our discussion of contemporary teaching and learning, the science of reading has really exploded on the national stage as part of a conversation. This has been due to an investment in high-quality journalism that's resulted in popular podcasts and top-selling books. There's been an examination of how different forms of research, cognitive, linguistic, psychological, have influenced policy, teacher-preparation programs, and curriculum selection as related to these early stages of learning how to read. Science of reading, you'll hear, is many things but also not one specific thing. It's an emerging consensus, really, from different disciplines, including the ones I mentioned, the cognitive scientists and the linguistic experts. It covers different languages, different regions of the world, and it's based in thousands of dollars of research grants that are really focused on trying to unlock how the brain goes about learning to read. And it's a complicated process that the rope on the left will show you, involves a lot of disparate skills coming together. No longer are we just looking at decoding and comprehension. Those skills break into different strands that, once woven together, will lead to skilled reading. TACO's always had its eye on evidence-based instruction. For example, our systematic phonics instruction through Foundations and the early practice in oral fluency that you find in Wonders. And the science of reading is also nothing new to the TACO Union Free School District. It's a new way of describing some of that research and evidence that we're using in our program selection. However, grouped with our commitment to continuous improvement, those cycles that Pete and I have been describing, it's a groundwork on which we can review our procedures in a cyclical manner. So new studies come out on a regular basis. This gives us some more insight into how we can better teach the early reading process. We want to be nimble and ready to respond to these new findings. So how are we incorporating some of these findings today? Understanding that Foundations is a premier curriculum in offering phonological awareness, we want to ensure that students are also mastering phonemic awareness, a disparate skill that's not often explicitly taught. So in essence, we're talking about a child's ability to recognize and manipulate a sound within a word. When you're in the midst of, right now, we're in the midst of piloting a top-rated curriculum in some of our classes related to phonemic awareness, and we're seeing very positive results. And you'll hear about those in the following video. We're also currently engaging in a book study with several teachers at the early grade levels, talking about moving towards the science of reading and shifting away from some older traditional models of instruction related to reading. And next year, we plan to rethink how we assess some of these early literacy skills, which will involve revisiting our report card structure, how we connect students to texts, which will involve revisiting our classroom libraries, and how this works extends beyond K-2. Because learning to read is something that we're going to be doing all our lives, and this will involve some professional learning for our teachers in the upper and secondary grades. And here in this video, our teachers will share some of the work we're doing related to continuous improvement, data cycles, as well as the science of reading.
At William E. Cottle, our school-building-level data team's goal is to utilize benchmark data to identify priority areas in which each grade can identify areas in need of improvement and create a focus for tier-one intervention. It is comprised of a representative from each grade level, special education teachers, a school psychologist, interventionists, as well as building and district administrators. The participants were placed in grade band cohorts, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, as well as K5 demographic group that focuses on our school's Hispanic, African-American, and economically disadvantaged students. The team meets three times per year in October, March, and June. They unpack benchmark data from I-Ready Math and Reading Diagnostic Assessments and from the 2022 3-5 ELA Math and New York State Test Results. The overall data that is collected is then turnkey to individual grade-level data and create teams where they will then utilize their findings to evaluate their current action plan and modify instruction accordingly. This inquiry process allows educators to calibrate their expectations, analyze current instructional practices, and create action plans to improve teaching and learning.
I view science of reading as a recipe for a good stew. You must have explicit ingredients to add to your stew to make it taste great. So each ingredient adds its own flavor, and without it, the stew just won't taste the same.
So science of reading is not a program. It is a systematic approach to looking at different programs to see if they are highlighting the key areas that are targeting reading and writing instruction. So at Cottle, when we took a look at the programs that we already have in place, like Foundations, Reading Wonders, Writing Revolution, we saw that all of those touch upon what the science of reading is. In addition, we realized we needed to bring in a phonological approach, which is what Hegarty touches on, and it has shown great improvement in our readers.
So Hegarty is a really great program. It's K to 2. It focuses on phonemic awareness, phonics, and the foundational skills. For example, determining initial and ending sounds. Kids really like it because it's systematic, multi-sensory, and interactive. I use it in whole-group, small-group intervention. And then after that, what I like to do is use a lot of the activities during my WIN Center. So I break the students up into their ability levels and reinforce and help students apply the necessary skills learned.
And the upper elementary grades were shifting from learning to read to reading to learn. And with that aspect, we have a lot of novel studies that we've been engaging in to show students both mirrors and windows. Mirrors, meaning they can see themselves. Windows, meaning they can take a peek into others that they may not otherwise see.
And to add to that point, this gives an opportunity for our children to have exposure to diverse characters, diverse storylines, and different settings other than what they might have seen or known prior.
Great. So this year, we have offered integrated co-teaching or ICT on every grade level at William E. Cottle Elementary School to be part of our special education continuum of supports. By having this support available, we have been able to successfully move students from more restrictive educational programs to less restrictive educational settings with greater ease. In the past, when we only had consultant teacher supports available in the grade levels, moving students from special classes and segregated classrooms was somewhat challenging. Teachers are able to have meaningful conversations, and we have seen students move to less restrictive general education settings because of the full ICT support now available to them. We continue to have specialized classrooms, a 12-12 program and an 8-12 program at Cottle for our most challenged learners, but we are seeing more students integrated in with their typical peers for more opportunities because of this support available. This year, teachers retrieve training from experts in the field, and by next year, some teams will be on year three of their partnership, which is fantastic. Here, you will see one of our co-teaching pairs providing instruction through the station teaching model of ICT to illustrate.
Class 2GG is an integrated co-taught classroom. For this ELA lesson, we used recent data derived from our mid-year I-Ready results to drive our instructional area of focus. These results showed that second graders would benefit from practice in the area of vocabulary. At the beginning of this unit, we administered a pre-test to assess the students' prior knowledge of the vocabulary words. The results of this pre-test showed particular difficulty with two words. We decided to utilize a teaching model that includes three stations. In the partner station, students work together to construct their own sentences for these words. They then create an illustration to match their sentence. In the writing station, the students are given a topic sentence that includes one of the vocabulary words. They are learning how to write details that support a topic sentence. For this activity, students need to combine their knowledge of our fable unit with their understanding of the vocabulary words to generate meaningful details. In the independent station, students are playing a vocabulary game that is differentiated according to student needs and will be assigned in Google Classroom. These activities will prepare them for an upcoming assessment.
This year, in order to help our students understand the diverse needs of learners and those students around them, we are diving into this with celebration. We're celebrating our differences. This year, staff and students enjoyed a day of celebration on 3/21 to support National Down Syndrome Day and Crazy Sock Day. We are blessed in our district to have two students with Down Syndrome that we are able to educate in our home schools and keep them in our communities. Students and staff have embraced these differences. In addition, Cottle is embracing April is Autism Awareness Month with commitment and compassion. In addition to having doors decorated to celebrate neurodiversity and inclusion, there will be videos of our own students describing autism in their own words for their peers to increase understanding, empathy, and inclusivity. It is now estimated that one in 54 children in the United States are diagnosed on the autism spectrum. And it's important that we take steps to create a more inclusive and accepting community, which with each of these awareness celebrations, we are building a culture of understanding and acceptance at the Cottle Schools. Talking a little more about our reading initiatives. In addition to the reading initiatives initiated for all students at Cottle, including Foundation and Reading Wonders, which you have heard about, students requiring additional supports have been supported using research-based intensive instruction. Teachers have been trained and are infusing best practices in Wilson, PAF, and Orton-Gillingham intensive supports. In addition, students who require intensive direct instruction are providing reading and language instruction through the Reading Mastery Transformation Series, which has been updated to align with a Common Core curriculum. In addition, this year, we have added the supplemental supports of fantastic programs, including the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness, which you've heard about, Geodes, and leveled books from Flyleaf Publishing. For next year, we will continue to build upon the solid, research-based initiatives to support reading and literacy in all of our learners.
So, there is so much going on at Cottle, and we wish we could dedicate time to highlight each of these events, initiatives, and milestones. Autism Awareness Month is in April, and it's one of our best opportunities to help spread autism awareness education. Though our goal should be provide alliance and support every day of the year, a month-long celebration and education period is a great way to showcase important information to friends, family, and potential new allies for our children with autism. Please remember, Autism Awareness Recognition Day in the TACO Union Free School District will be tomorrow, April 12th. We had t-shirts and sweatshirts made for this day, and our t-shirts and sweatshirts designs were created by three Cottle students. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge Carter Brooks, Chloe Campana, and Lauren Idenai. Beautiful sweatshirts and t-shirts that will be on display tomorrow. And if you didn't purchase a sweatshirt or t-shirt, please wear blue in recognition for Autism Awareness Month. Please be sure to join us on May 16th for the William E. Cottle Science Fair, beginning at 6:00 PM in the William E. Cottle Gym. This is part of Tuckapalooza. That will also be there, offering many other events, and most importantly, we'll have the budget vote on that night as well. More information on these remaining events and more events that are coming in the few months can be found on the William E. Cottle's website. And please be sure to read our Cottle Weeklys every Friday.
And as we are a UPK-12 district, we wanted to carve out a space to celebrate the work of our preschoolers as well as the partnership we enjoy with the Cornerstone Children's Center. This year, we've seen our students thrive. When you go to the Cornerstone Children's Center, you're immediately met with joy and a love of learning. This year, we sought to strengthen the bridge in three different areas. In terms of curriculum articulation, we focused on early literacy by implementing Foundations pre-K materials. The current budget proposal also includes funding for new technology and phonemic awareness for our pre-K Cubs. Pre-K staff have participated in our trainings, our conference days. They've collaborated with our kindergarten staff and have hosted parent-teacher conferences on the same day as our elementary school teachers.
In meeting with our families, we heard that our pre-K parents wanted to feel more included in the K-12 district. They're at a satellite location, but they did not want to feel like outsiders. So partnering with our PTA, we took steps to address these issues, including, we've enlisted all UPK families in our district BLAST so they're aware of all the events district-wide going on. We have hosted open houses and tours for families that are interested in the program to get more of an articulation. We have coordinated events so that universal pre-K students and their families are part of the festivities at Cottle. And we have set regular meetings and trainings for our UPK teachers and administrators to come and learn about the district-wide initiatives and the trainings that we feel are important for teachers to know and to coordinate with our K-12 teachers and administrators. We have also obtained grant funding to further infuse the UPK program with materials to enhance their learning. And just recently, we delivered a trunk full of new learning resources, toys, and science equipment that aligned with the creative curriculum that they are utilizing. And we have also worked with the program to boost their outdoor space and promote collaboration. We meet with our partners at the UPK on a regular basis, and we now see them as our partners in setting our littlest learners up for success. This year, we saw more applications for the program than ever, and we are looking forward to seeing it continue to grow.
Thank you. That was really such an exciting presentation. But now, we must shift to our budget summary. Before we dive deep into the revenue and expenditures, please note the variables and drivers that impacted our decision-making. Our primary goal when building the budget is to allocate our resources in a way that meets the needs of all students in the district while also being fiscally responsible. Additionally, a strategic plan allows for ongoing evaluation and monitoring of progress, enabling us to adjust our strategies and budget priorities as needed to ensure continued success. Now, Ms. Sparks will explain the process.
Thank you. I'll kick things off with our revenues. Real property taxes being our largest revenue item, the 2023-24 budget has proven more difficult than the budgets of the past few years with inflationary pressures catching up to us. With the tax cap, we are limited in ways we can create revenues. We are proposing the 2023-24 tax levy at $31,237,172, a 2.74% increase or $833,190 increase. This proposed tax levy is $500,000 below the maximum allowable under our tax cap, keeping $500,000 in the pockets of our taxpayers. $500,000 in the pockets of our taxpayers. This slide is an illustration of the multi-step formula we use to calculate the tax cap. You will notice in rows T, U, and V that we are proposing a levy below the maximum amount under this cap. Each year, we carefully review and work through the tax cap law and formula and have designed our budget in compliance with the law. For 2023-24 school year, we have ensured that the proposed levy is below the legal limit set by the law and is designed to provide a balance between meeting the needs of our students and the financial burden on our taxpayers in this inflationary environment. We have worked to find ways to balance the needs of our students and the financial impact on our taxpayers. We already covered real property taxes and the tax cap, so our next largest revenue source is state aid. While April 1st represents the start of a new state fiscal year, negotiations still continue between the legislature and the governor on the 2324 state budget. With no state budget deal in place yet, Governor Hochul submitted a second one-week budget extender to the Senate and Assembly. Both houses passed the extender, which provides funding for state obligations through Monday, April 17th. So we do not have a final state aid budget as of today. We are still working off of the governor's proposal. In her proposal, we are scheduled to receive a foundation aid increase of approximately $913,000 or 37.88%. When the 2021-22 budget was enacted, it included law that districts receiving more than 10% or $10 million in foundation aid to seek public comment on the use of these funds. As we have done in the past two years, we sent out a survey, an email. It's actually in our happenings. It's a survey to gain public comment on how we spend these monies. So please keep an eye out in the happenings for this survey. Here, you will see a chart of all our proposed revenue budget categories, starting with real property taxes at the top at an increase that is below the legal tax cap limit, $500,000 below. You'll notice the last line on the chart is appropriated fund balance. This is the planned use of fund balance to balance our budget. We are proposing to decrease this number. Later in the presentation, we will have a chart showing the history of our appropriated fund balance. If we look at our revenues as pieces of a pie, you will see that real property taxes are the largest part of that pie in blue. Switching gears to expenditures, as we have discussed in depth, the numerous expenditure budget drivers, such as salary increases as per collective bargaining agreements, the cost of benefits, including health insurance and pensions, the rising cost of utilities and maintenance of our buildings, large increases in transportation costs as we had to go out to bid for all transportation services for 2324. Our school district is not immune to the inflationary pressures and the increased costs of labors. The 2324 budget does reflect a reduction in a number of one-time expenses that were specific to the current school year and will not be recurring. This chart is a summary of the proposed budget and changes over the current budget. When we look at the different components that make up each category and we put it into a pie chart, you'll see here that salary and benefits make up 71% of our budget. Our proposed budget summary is 40... Our proposed budget for 2324 is $40,113,060, a percentage increase of 4.94%. The dollar increase is $1,887,559. The proposed tax levy is $31,237,172, which is a 2.74% increase or $833,190, and is below the legal tax limit based on the state comptroller's formula, keeping money in the pockets of our taxpayers. Well, where does this leave us? We are required to have a balanced budget. When we look at our proposed budget before appropriated fund balance, we have a gap of $1,322,897. As a public school district, we are limited in the ways we can generate revenue, so our proposed budget includes an appropriation of fund balance to balance the budget. The proposed 2324 appropriated fund balance is $1,322,897, which is a reduction of $37,631 from the 2223 levels. This slide shows the history of appropriated fund balance. With the increase projected in foundation aid, which is a recurring revenue, and the favorable position we anticipate ending this year in, we are proposing no increase to appropriated fund balance and are even able to reduce our reliance on it to balance the This is the time of year where we review in detail where we think we will end this year. This slide shows our projected revenues and expenses and projected ending fund balance for the school year. The top of this slide shows our current reserves. You can see 72% or $7.75 million of our reserves are set aside in special reserve funds. The remainder is split between assigned and unassigned. As we look closely at our 2223 estimated revenues and expenses, we are anticipating a surplus of approximately $670,000. This puts us in a favorable position for the year-end. We continue to monitor and refine these projections as we move closer to the end of the year. Some of the drivers behind this surplus are sales tax revenue coming in more than anticipated, non-resident special education tuition revenue. We were anticipating a drop in that, and we have not seen a drop, and we've brought a few kids in. And interest earnings coming in over budget. Interest earnings being the largest of the favorable variances. While the Fed has continued to raise interest rates, we are still conservative as we know this will not continue in perpetuity. We anticipate interest earnings to come in about $360,000 over the budget, which the budget was $15,000. But to put interest earnings into perspective, our interest revenue for last school year was $25,841, and the year before was $20,914. So this is a line that fluctuates significantly based on what the Fed sets for interest rates, and we can't raise that budget too high because it will, at some point, come down, and we will have an even bigger hole.
A budget is a reflection of a district's values, and we believe the proposed budget captures our innovation and commitment to students. Our highlights permit staffing that supports favorable class sizes. We also are excited that this proposed budget allows for professional learning and new programs that promote innovation and critical thinking. The budget reflects a focus on early literacy, project-based learning, new English-language arts initiatives, and rigorous science standards. It also expands opportunities for advanced courses by introducing new electives in all content areas and new extracurriculars. It continues to ensure a high-quality education for our students. Our proposals are linked directly to our strategic plan. We appreciate the support of the board and community as we enact a plan that prepares every student for excellence. Here, you see our budget calendar. We kicked off our series of conversations with comprehensive overview of the financial landscape and an update on our priorities and commitments. We follow up with deep dives of our priorities, commitments, and initiatives at the middle and high school. I encourage our community to visit our website and take a look at the great work that was highlighted in our previous presentations. The William E. Coddle Elementary School Budget provides the elementary students with research-based approach to preparing students for excellence in our youngest grades. The 2023 proposed budget for the elementary school focuses on early literacy, social emotional learning, and contemporary instructional strategies, all which can lead to improved academic outcomes as students continue through middle and high school. At our next meeting, we will make sure that there are no questions left unanswered. On Tuesday, April 18th, the board will vote to adopt the proposed budget. On Monday, May 8th, the administrative team will present the final budget to the community for a hearing before the annual vote and trustee election on Tuesday, May 16th. As always, we thank you for your support. Toccoho leads the way because of the thoughtful approaches and prudent use of resources and budgeting that you heard about tonight. First and foremost, we appreciate the support of the Board of Education. They drive everything that we do, and the administrators that you heard from the last two meetings, and of course, our wonderful teachers and staff in this multifaceted work. As you can see from our presentation, as we spotlight our schools, this is a great time for a Toccoho Tiger or a Toccoho Cub. Ultimately, we have a well-executed strategic plan, which has improved student outcomes, increased community engagement, and greater overall success for our district. Special thanks to Mr. Marash and Ms. Kilgallen for their leadership in our elementary school, setting our students up for lifelong success right when they enter our district. And I have to say, I'm there a lot, and the kids really are smiling more than I've seen in any school. Thank you to Dr. Keough for his stellar leadership in curriculum and instruction. So much of what you see here today and what you saw at our last workshop is because of the focus on our vision that he has and his hard work. And thank you to Dr. Sweeney for your continued focus on ensuring the best possibilities for our students with learning differences. And by the way, that revenue had a lot to do with the great programs that we have because we are able to keep students and also bring students in. Lastly, thank you to Ms. Sparks for your thoughtfulness in everything that you do and so-student-centered fiscal responsibility and flexibility. And thank you to our exceptional teachers. They help students develop important skills such as collaboration, communication, problem-solving, and creativity, which are essential for success in college and in the workforce. A special thank you to the teacher leaders who contributed to tonight's presentation. Ms. Diana Castro, Ms. Susan Thomas-Hatcher, Ms. Elizabeth Merkel, Ms. Rachel Silver, Ms. Sabrina Perdudo, Dr. Randy Newman, Ms. Marissa Fraschante, Ms. Faravolpe, Ms. Diana Lardnero, Ms. Andrea Ganzemmi, and Ms. Erin Gorman. And thank you to our community. Toccoho School District's school community cares about all students and moving them forward. This community comes out and cheers our students on in all their endeavors. It is why people are moving to Toccoho. The proposed budget includes programming, investment, and resources that will allow us to keep up the momentum as Toccoho leads the way. Thank you for your attention to our district proposed budget. This rainbow, this double rainbow, that's shone bright over our new Coddle field the evening before ribbon cutting is a perfect symbol of the potential that comes from our community's investment in our students' success and experience. The physical manifestation of a double rainbow represents success, transformation, and unity as it is merging and harmonizing of all the main colors. This is essential, and it is symbolic of the light Toccoho shines as we lead the way. I am now happy to open the floor up to discussion.
As usual, of late, excellent presentation, lots of stuff in there, really jam-packed with really, really a lot of good stuff. So I mean, I think the overall message I took from this as a taxpayer, more so than a board member, is that there's a lot that we're getting for this budget in terms of dollars for quality and value and in terms of keeping us on pace for our strategic goals. So really good job. You guys have a second career in broadcasting, I guess, if you want it. That was cool, though. We appreciate the videos, actually, we really do. It's neat to get an inside look. And obviously, the focus on SCL and creating an environment for our kids to want to come to school and be at school and to learn is really, really important. So I know that stuff's not easy to do. You kind of put your pride in, you go to the side, and you jump in, but it's really appreciated, though. It's awesome. It's good. Thank you very much for that. So I don't really have too many questions. I know we've been through this a couple times. It was really well-presented, so I don't have too much. I had two sort of minor questions, but they're really kind of minor. So I'll leave it to the end, and I'll pass it off to my colleagues if anybody has anything. Do you have anything?
Well, thank you for that presentation. It was very good and very... As a board member who is no longer in Coddle, it's great to see the teachers and the kids and what's going on down there and all the smiles. I had just... I just want to sort of piggyback a little bit on what Pete was saying for the community, whoever's listening to this. As someone who is now at the tail end of having gone through that, seeing these programs, and I was just jotting them down so I could remember what Hagert, PAF, Wilson, Orton-Gillingham, I mean, all these names and words and some of the general education are going to benefit from this, too. Certainly, it's a special ed initiative, but it's certainly for every child. And I heard the word "balanced literacy," and my head wanted to explode a little bit. But shifting the balance, I just wanted to sort of highlight that a little bit, which I think... And I'm not an educator, but I do do some reading, and I'm interested in learning these things. And I think it's so important for people out there to realize how wonderful or how... You know, Coddle has always been a great school, but now we're finally sort of getting that UPK, right? We're starting so early, and children are just going to benefit so much from that. So I think the budget's excellent. I think this district is going in such a great direction, and certainly, it starts with early intervention, in my mind. It starts with them, and you had the universal pre-K picking up things, assessing, and then constantly offering with the child and meeting them where their needs are. So thank you so much for that presentation. It was great. And my last thing that I just wanted to highlight was the WIN. And can I ask a question, or are we just commenting right now?
No, questions, yeah.
We're just having a discussion, right? So when we were... Go back when we first were doing that, Ms. Sparks, that was like when you first came through the door, right? And that was sort of not... Just to say controversial, but there were a lot of debates and discussion around how that... Can you just highlight a little bit of that journey for us as, you know, as parents who heard how it was going to go and where it's come? Because we heard about differentiation, but how did it come to? And is it progressing in a way that it's really differentiating? Do you know what I mean? Like versus a kid has a headset on and we're not really? Or is the child really getting their intervention needs there? How did it sort of progress to now, since when you started it?
So when we first started WIN, actually, the first rollout year was when the pandemic hit. That was the 1920 school year. So it was going beautifully, and then the pandemic hit, and we had to change things for the next school year, the 2021 school year, and even to an extent, the 2122 school year, where we had to make adjustments to the schedule, social distancing. So, you know, we sort of put the WIN... It was still there, but we weren't able to put all of our energy right behind it. This school year is really like the second full school year of rollout. So between 1920 and now, there has been tremendous growth in the model of WIN. As we mentioned earlier, we have provided guidance for the teachers in different models and formats and ways to structure WIN within a classroom or even within an entire grade level. Within a classroom, a lot of it is data-driven, I'm very happy to say. The teachers use data that is either they look into themselves or that is provided by the building-level data team to create groupings within WIN. So they can create leveled groups within WIN. So you can have the group that is, you know, data-supported, they need enrichment, or they're able to go on and upward in math or a hands-on science project. We have our new RTI process, and the first step in that is what we call Tier One Support. So if a teacher notices that there might be a lack in a foundational skill in mathematics, they submit a form to the intervention team, the IST team, and they say how they're going to support that student for, you know, that minimum of six to 12 weeks. And the best time to do that is during WIN, because that's what that student or those students need during WIN. So I would say, you know, providing the teachers with suggestions on how to structure a WIN period, combined with data to support groupings and additional Tier One supports and a new RTI model, has strengthened the WIN period from 1920 through now. And it's only going to get stronger.
I would imagine, too. And I think that data is very important. And talked a lot about that, the data teams. You know, it's just... It's exciting to hear, you know, sit through a presentation where, you know, you can always talk about different initiatives, but to really be data-driven, that as a board, that's something that we've talked since the beginning of time, and we appreciate it's now coming.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, it's coming to the front. So thank you. Over to you.
Yeah. I just wanted to echo the same. I have no children at Coddle anymore, but the evolution of the Coddle programming and around curriculum instruction, even climate and culture, is vastly... and around curriculum instruction, even climate and culture, is vastly different than when my kids were there. And I'm so happy for the children and the families, scholars who are there, who are benefiting from a lot of advocating that I know that you, me, Teres, and others did over the course of many years. Me, in particular, about the foundation of building reading skills among our students, especially the phonemic awareness piece. If the children, students, scholars do not have a hold on just the phonemic awareness piece hearing, it makes it very difficult for them to move as learners in reading. It really, really is. That is so key, and to hear that those things are actually happening now, I'm like really sad that I have no more babies at the Cottle level. Maybe not, maybe I actually am okay with that. It's parenting thing, it's no joke. So, to have that in place now is awesome. That, those are the things that I know I personally wanted to see happening, and to have that happening is just absolutely outstanding. I'm so, so proud of the progress that we're making in our district at the elementary level, what's happening at our middle school is evolving, and in turn, in our high school with the addition of some electives for our students at the high school is big. I'm just really, really happy, and I think that this budget is one, as Pete said, that really supports the district's values, and it lets everyone know whether you have students in the school or not, in the district or not, that their money is being put to good use. It is not being taken for granted. There's real thought and strategic planning that is going on, and real implementation and follow-through. So, thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you drive around the school, the last couple of years, you see a lot of construction going on, and that's neat, but honestly, what this shows is a lot of, most of the effort is really in building out the academics and building out the delivery of, of education, is happening a lot in the last couple of years. So, yeah, this is, it's, it's really, it's exciting. It really is. The progress has been made in the last three or four years, this is really palpable.
Yes.
It really is. So, thank you for all that. Appreciate it, just a second.
Yeah, no, just real quick, I want to say thank you so much to the support of the Board of Education, really, for everything you do for Cottle, for our Cottle Cubs, for all of these, the programs coming in, that's Dr. Goodman, Dr. Sweeney, Dr. Kio, and it's, it's the teachers, and it's the aides, and it's the teaching assistants, you know, we have Hegarty, we have foundations, and it's them believing in it as well, wanting it, getting into it, learning it, teaching it. So, it's a true.
And that comes through on the videos. Even though they know they're on camera, but you tell it's genuine.
Absolutely.
It comes through on the videos, it really does.
But thank you very much for the Board of Ed and the support that you provide.
I would like to say something, too. And again, I was going to say the teachers and all of that, but really, it happens, you know, from also the administration. And I have to say that I have been so highly impressed by the work of the two, I almost feel like co-principals over there. They really work.
Co-pilots.
Co-pilots, that's a good way. You're the principal, you're the assistant principal, true. But they really do co-pilot so well together, and there are so many teacher leaders at Cottle, and it's evident on that, and at the middle school, high school, too, we did see that, and I think that's a big difference. And of course, with the district leadership, it makes a really big difference.
Absolutely.
And everything being based on data and following our strategic plan, I think this is a school, and it all really comes from the Board of Education, because they do have high expectations for us. This is what they wanted, and we are delivering it, and we still, this continuous improvement that we keep on striving for, we're striving for excellence for all, and, you know, it's a great team. And again, fiscal responsibility, Faith Sparks. Appreciate it.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't, and I know, let's, let's give the numbers a little bit of love here, too. Because, because honestly, that, a lot of good work was done on that end, and I want to commend Faith and Dr. Goodman knows well on, on that, because as you saw in the presentation, I know it's very real, the inflationary pressures are there, this was a more difficult budget, and as a result, the tax cap was particularly high this year, relatively high compared to recent years, and going back, it's actually not that high, but, but of recent years, it's been relatively high. And I think essentially, what we did, which I think was a right compromise, is we sacrificed a little bit more of a downward slope on that, on that allocation of fund balance, still downward, though, but just maybe not as sharply down as we've been going the last three or four years. But that was a little bit of a sacrifice in order to offset that big jump of 4%, and you got it down to 2.74, which is a big alleviation to the taxpayers. So, that's something we, as a group, discussed, and you guys responded to it, and we appreciate that. So, really nice job on that. So, I think you deserve a lot of credit for that, because I think that was a tough, to come in that, that low with that type of, you know, pressures was, was not easy. So, we appreciate that. So, great job. Okay, awesome. Soon we get to stop talking about the budget, right?
I had a lot to hear, I have to say.
No, it's good stuff. I mean, look, it's, it's kind of where it all comes together, so, it's good. Thank you very much for the time and the effort, guys.
Thank you.
The next two will be shorter, I promise. We'll just summarize.
Yeah, but, you know, it's hard, it's hard not to, you have a lot to talk about.
And, and so that the public knows they're all online, and you can go to specific parts if you want to just watch, you know, the principal, the principal's presentation and the administration, or just the financial piece, you can do that, too.
Well, and it's getting close enough now to just say to those that are listening, you know, make sure you have that data on your calendar to come out and vote, May 16th, right? May 16th, very, very important. Obviously, we need the community support for, for the budget, really important, so please make sure you, you mark it on your calendars, and you tell your neighbors, and come out and vote. All right. All right, we got a little bit of business tonight, not too much, because it's a workshop, but we do have a little bit, so let's, let's go ahead and get through that. All right, we have a consent agenda. So, motion to approve consent agenda items, this is for the narratives, yeah. Motion to approve consent items two through six. Lori, second Laura, any discussion on these items? All in favor? Bringing us over to the business of the Board, we have a couple of policy readings, two, two second readings and one first reading. These are all policy changes and additions that were required by law that we had. So, the first one up is a second reading of Policy 8111, which is opioid overdose prevention. In an effort to ensure the health and safety of its students and staff, the district will administer an opioid antagonist in its schools, specifically Naloxone, otherwise known by its brand name as Narcon, Narcan, sorry, Narcan, for use during emergencies to any student or staff member experiencing a known or suspected opioid overdose, regardless of a previous history of opioid abuse prior to participation in an opioid overdose prevention program, and providing an opioid antagonist in the school. The Board of Education must develop policies consistent with the laws and regulations of New York State. Both Nurse Higgins and Nurse, Police? Police, police. Have completed Narcan Treatment Training Program from Southern Westchester Voces, and they are trained and qualified to administer Narcan if there is an emergency and the need arises. So, that's what this policy is about. You can read the entire policy on Board Docs if you'd like. Yeah, it's 8111. So, next Board meeting, we'll do the final reading, and we'll, and we'll vote that in. Okay. So, next is a second reading of Policy 6420, and that's a payroll policy. This policy reflects legal and regulatory changes related to payroll procedures, including the comptroller's five-point plan. In addition, the comptroller has recently promulgated regulations which now require every employer participating in the New York State and local retirement systems to evaluate the status of certain professionals engaged by the employer. So, that's the changes in that policy. Get it 6420 if you want to read the entire thing. And then lastly, is a first reading of essentially three policies, right, Robin? Is that what this is?
Yes, that's correct.
So, it's 0115, 0115 dash R, and 0115 dash E. There is a revision to a background note to address a recent Supreme Court ruling and updates to the legal citations. This policy reflects the provisions and requirements of the Dignity for All Students Act and the Commissioner's Regulations implementing it, including changes made under the Crown Act. This specifies that discrimination on the basis of race includes traits historically associated with race, such as hair texture and hairstyles like braids, locks, and twists. Revisions were made to the change wording for his/her, to they/they're, and changed the wording of shall and should to will and must. The revisions also designate the responsibility of implementing and coordinating of bullying, bullying prevention to the District-Wide Equity and Wellness Committee to be overseen by the District-Wide Dignity Act Coordinator. Are you sure this isn't our second? Didn't we read this already once? Is this, is that first? I thought we read this one already.
Did I, did I?
I, I think we, I, I'm quite, I'm quite certain we actually read this first.
At least the second.
Yeah, but this is our second, so.
I'll make that correction.
Yes, and the next time should be our third as well, that we can vote it in. Okay, great. Next up is approved disposal of public property. Resolved at Board of Education in accordance with Policy 6900, disposal of public property declares the following books to be obsolete: Books, Workbooks, and Level Readers for Reading Wonders 2016, Books and Workbooks for Envision's Path 2018. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the disposal of the above by offering for sale to local municipalities or local nonprofit organizations, or selling at a public auction or, or sale. Otherwise, they will be recycled in the most environmentally appropriate manner. Do you have a motion? Lori, second Laura, any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, next up, approved purchasing agreement. Resolved that Board of Education approves a purchasing service agreement with educational data service incorporated in the amount of $2,100 for the period of April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2024. Do you have a motion? Lori, second Laura, any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay. Next, approved an agreement. Be resolved that the Board of Education, Tocco Union Free School District, upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools hereby approves the agreement dated March 15, 2023, extending the probationary appointment of employee number 2486 for a period of one year to August 30th, 2024, in accordance with the terms of said agreement. Got a motion? Lori, second Laura, all in favor? Next, approve an IPA. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District hereby adopts the IPA resolution as attached to the official minutes of this meeting. Do you have a motion? Lori, second Laura, any discussion on this? All in favor? And again, approval of disposal of public property. Resolved at Board of Education in accordance with Policy 6900, disposal of public property declares the attached list of library books to be obsolete, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the disposal of the above by offering for sale to local municipalities or local nonprofit organizations, or, or sell at a public auction or sale. Otherwise, they will be recycled in the most environmentally appropriate manner. Do you have a motion? Lori, second Laura. I assume this is probably cleaning out the old library a little bit?
Yep.
And make away for the new. All in favor? Okay, and lastly, on the business of the Board, approved an agreement. Resolved that Board of Education approves an agreement with Kais Architecture. Did I say it right?
Case.
Case, Case?
Casey.
Okay, Casey Architecture, P L L C, to assess water infiltration in the middle school, high school cafeteria, not to exceed $5,000. Do you have a motion? Lori, second Laura, any discussion on this? So, this is just to help us figure out where that water's coming from, right?
Another set of eyes to try to figure out what's going on.
Yeah, I know, we poked some, some holes, and we haven't figured anything out yet?
Not yet.
Yeah.
No, there is a plan to do some additional testing on that, but it's kind of unclear what's happening.
Yeah, okay. So, do these folks have some sort of expertise in that area?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. All in favor? Okay, and lastly, personnel recommendations resolved that the Board of Education, Tocco Union Free School District, approves Personnel Action Items A through D as outlined below. A motion on that? Lori, second Laura, any discussion on these? All in favor? Okay, that's it, that's all we have. We can adjourn the meeting. Motion to adjourn, Laura, second Lori, all in favor? All right, thank you very much, especially to all our presenters, for your time and effort. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.